Let us pray. Dear Lord, if we read your word, we see that you are interested in governments and in powers. We see that you are interested in rights and in peoples. We see that you are interested in the way that we plan ahead and in the way that we use our available funds and in the way that we handle conflict. So knowing that you are interested in what we are here to do tonight, please guide us in your wisdom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Councilmember Mike Rastusia, Dean Eufer, Daniel DeGraff, Vice Mayor Jake Parks, Mayor Leo Zubor. Mr. Mayor, we're having some technical difficulty over here controlling the mic, so if you could make sure that you're doing it on your own, that would be great.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes for the meeting of May 14th. Oh, public discussion. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to make a presentation on anything not on the agenda? If you could come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Dave Drouady. I reside at 1442 Grand Way here in Ribbon. I want to talk about my house I have on Jacktown. I've been trying to reach out for help with these trees that we have with the sycamores that are leaving pretty much damaging to our property. So, we the people want the trees removed. We have a petition, and we'd like to get it on the agenda for your next meeting. If it's on the agenda, we will have more people here to, you know, probably talk about something. But it's a mess. I mean, I hope you guys got emails. You know, Ted's the only one that sent me one back saying, yeah, the trees are putting out a lot more this year than they normally do. Well, the trees are a lot bigger this year. So, the mess continues. If you go down the street, look at the gutter, it's disgusting. So, I just hope we can get something done with this. I've been dealing with this for four or five years now, and nothing's getting done. So, you know, that's why we got our petition, and, you know, we hope you guys will make the right decision for us. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. I'm Jason Loughlin with Assemblymember Heath Flora's office with a brief legislative update. I'll give you a few legislation items here that are still alive in the State Assembly or in the State Senate or moved on to the State Senate. AB 1732 is taking action to address homelessness. This will allow us to create a homeless resource center in the city of Manteca and give it to a local nonprofit. There's a, obviously, the homeless problem is increasing throughout the Central Valley. Manteca Bolton reported a couple months ago that Manteca Unified School District has 700 students that they're homeless, that they know of that are homeless currently. So this resource center will help folks like that. In addition to that, AB 876 is thankfully still alive, the familial health care coverage. That will allow you, at any age, to stay on your parents' health care plan if need be or vice versa. If my parents were to fall on hard times, for example, that would be allowed to be on my health care plan. And then in addition to that, restoring podiatric services, AB 678, this will restore podiatric and chiropractic services if you are on Medi-Cal. This is funding a program that was already funded before. This is not a tax increase, it's just using funds that were there before and restoring it. That's my update. If you have any questions, feel free to contact our office, and we're also right down the street at 578 North Woma Avenue. Thank you.
Anyone else? Now, we'll move on to approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda as posted. Is there any items on the consent calendar that people would like to pull?
I have some.
1.2A, 1.3A, 1.3B, and 1.4C. Yep.
Is that B or D on 1.3?
B, and then boy. Hearing no others, need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
Well, I hit the thing. I know. And then we need a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
So move.
Second.
All right, for 1.2A, it's my understanding that we're still waiting for some information from the school district.
We requested the PG&E, the income statements and all of the rest, which we received. However, the PG&E just showed the electricity, and I've met with Andy again. He's supposed to be reaching out to PG&E, but he doesn't have a firm number or numbers for us on the gas portion of that. And that's why in the report I said, if they provide that information in the future, we'll make adjustments. But we wanted to get this part approved because this is the last meeting of the fiscal year.
So there may be an addition next year for gas charges for this year?
There could be. As of right now, there's not, but he's working on it, and he says if he can come up with it, that could change in the future.
Okay. Can we do all four of these at the same time? All right, that's what we'll do. 1.3A, the question I have here is, there are, I think, four landscape maintenance districts in there that have positive balances in their account, and yet we're going to put more money in there to offset the expenses that we had for the year. Why are we doing that?
What we've been doing is, if there is a operational deficit in the accounts, we have been using general fund money to make up that deficit. A lot of these districts are very, very old and not indexed over time, and the revenue has not kept up with the expenses. So, we do that when there are these type of operational deficits, and then the amount of money that is the balance that are in each, that is assigned to each of those districts, we have left that there for reserves. So if there's a need for any sort of capital replacement within those districts, that money would become available.
But at some point, they're all going to be zero, except for the indexed ones.
It's a matter of time.
And I guess my question is, why would we want to prolong the agony? I mean, if we're, I'd rather use the money that we have now for something that we can get done than to put it there so that next year we put 3,000 less, and then the next year we put 4,000 more. If they're going to zero, get them to zero so that we're spending money we have to rather than money we'd like to make available sometime.
We definitely could do that. We, obviously, this is the budget and budgeting expenses and revenue, but we do bring this back as a resolution to the City Council at some point to actually make the transfers. So, you will see that at the end of this fiscal year, for fiscal year 1819, we will have a resolution that talks about transferring the money.
So we can talk about it action-wise then?
Yeah, if you don't want to do it for fiscal 1819, we don't have to do it, and we can start driving down those balances until they all get to zero.
Okay.
Do you know what that number is?
It's different for each one. There's one that's like $45,000 in its account. There's another one that's only like 1,700 bucks. It just depends on how they got where they got. And there are some in there that are zero already, so if they spend six, we're putting six in. And I don't have a problem with that, but I just have a problem putting money in there so that money we could be used gets left. Just me, I guess, I don't know.
We'll talk about it when we bring it back.
Okay. This one, the lighting district operates at about a $25,000 loss, as I read that. Where does that money come from?
Same fund makes up the difference, the general fund.
General fund. Well, part of the expense, as I recall, is about $39,000 we're paying PG&E and MID because we had to buy some of the lights and stuff when we created our own. How much longer are we paying?
There's only a couple more years left on that, I believe it's '21, '22 is our final thing.
So at that point, we actually could be showing a little bit of a profit?
We could. The unfortunate thing is, expenses continue.
No, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure. And... This is an additional addition to Grover's contract, which I have no problem with. I'm the one that said we ought to do this. But it's adding more stuff to it, and I guess my question is, are we beginning to look at some median landscape processes that will give us less landscaping that we have to deal with rather than more?
Yeah, in this particular case, the landscaping that's going in on River Road, which is included in this edition, it is, it's more of a low-maintenance-type ground cover in the parkway. The median's fairly similar with what's down there, but it is a lower-maintenance-type application, I guess. The parkway is definitely lower, there's no grass, it's just that ground cover, so...
All right. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve these four items.
So move.
Okay. Moving on. Oh, I've got to do the pro, is somebody here for the proclamation? Want to come up?
Would you like me to come there?
Right up here. I don't need that.
No, her.
I know. I mean the microphone.
Wait, you want to hear me?
Sure. The City Council has always recognized healthy communities as a priority, and healthy communities can encompass a range of ability and disability. Disabilities can affect all people regardless of race, gender, or social status, and increasing public awareness about disabilities is vital to fight against stigma and discrimination that often serve as a barrier to employment, socialization, and personal well-being. Within the next year, at least one in eight Californians will experience a disability personally or through a family member. The City of Ripon wants to celebrate and recognize people regardless of ability or disability. Education, understanding, and engagement are important components of a connected, livable, and healthy community. Communities thrive when residents appreciate the unique gifts inside people of all abilities. By developing positive relationships with our neighbors, we make our community a place where everyone is a valued member. Therefore, I am claiming by the Ripon City Council that June 2019 is Disability Awareness Month, and we urge all of our residents to become aware of the needs and capability of persons with disabilities. There's your proclamation, and the audience is yours.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the proclamation. My name is Michelle Allen, and I am the Executive Director of Society for Disabilities. We're located in downtown Modesto. I'm also the CEO of the Miracle League of Stanislaus County, which is the adaptive baseball league that we have in Modesto by Big Valley Church. We work with many people throughout Merced, San Joaquin, and Stanislaus County, and this year we've decided to ask our neighbors in Merced and San Joaquin Counties and the neighboring cities to proclaim Disability Awareness Month for June, as we've done for the last eight years throughout Stanislaus County. And actually, Assemblymember Flora also provided a resolution, which was very nice. We encourage you to take a look at our website, it's www.societyfordisabilities.org or miracleleaguemodesto.com, and you can see what kind of services and programs that we offer, including all of our adaptive recreation. And our water ski program starts this month at Modesto Reservoir, and we're looking for volunteers all the time. But again, we thank you for spreading awareness of disabilities and appreciating people and their different abilities. (applause)
Public hearings. First is the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 city budget. Mr. Werner, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the May meeting, we had a workshop to go through much of the information that is in my staff report for tonight's meeting. Like I mentioned at the last meeting, we remain on solid financial ground. This is really possible by the financial decisions of this City Council and previous City Councils that allowed us to operate this way. I think you're starting to hear more and more about cities and some of the struggles they're having to continue to provide the services that they have been providing. So, we continue to see increases in revenue and working very hard to manage our expenses. Just a couple highlights that I would point out that in my staff report, one of the key budget issues I mentioned in here was LTF funding and some of the discussions that are currently going on at the COG. Those continue to be ongoing discussions and obviously would have a very large impact to the City of Ripon and our street and road, the money we use for our street and road maintenance. Right now, those discussions are, not all the money would go away and not be used for street and road, only a portion of it, but those discussions do continue ongoing. I know Mayor Zubor is very involved in those, I'm very involved, and on the TAC level, James has been involved in those discussions. So, we'll keep the council up to date as those continue to move forward. We are participating in the county-wide redevelopment agency, and we continue to receive the $250,000 administrative fee, and we continue to budget for that. At some point, I would expect that to go away, but there's no indication yet as to when that would happen. We've talked a lot about staffing, especially since the recession, the staff and the council have had a lot of discussions about ways to leverage our existing employees. We made a large investment in one-time capital purchases to leverage the staff. As far as this budget goes, there is a recommendation of one full-time position, it is a records clerk for the police department. With that, I'll stop, and obviously, tonight's a public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody from the council have any questions?
I just have a couple comments. So Kevin, you've always done a good job of keeping the city fiscally sound, so I appreciate that. When you take a look at the finances of other cities and other places, you've done a good job, so I appreciate that. You can credit the council, but I credit you for that, not the council. The second thing is, do you know what the timing of the actuarial rate at Calpers is going? I know it's going seven and a half down to seven at some point, but is that like 20 basis points a year, or is it going 50, 25? Do you know what it is?
Yeah, it's, I don't know if I remember off the top of my head.
Okay, that's okay. Because we're going to have to budget for it differently each year then, depending on what the...
Yeah, that's right. We do have a model that projects out what the rates are.
Seven is the bottom?
Seven is...
As we know it today?
I think we're seven...
Yeah, as we know it today, yeah.
Right, I think we're seven and a quarter this year, and I think we transition to seven next year.
Okay, so it takes the full quarter, because you said over seven years. Has it been seven years already?
Starting July 2018.
Yeah, so it's only been one or two years, huh? Okay, that's okay, I just didn't know if you knew it, because I see that going down to six and a half and six at some point.
I would agree with that, at some point.
Well, it may go out of, corporate America uses two.
Right.
Okay.
We have the state legislature behind us.
I know.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I know that we're short a few police officers, but is that already pre-budgeted in because those are jobs that people lost, so they don't need to be in on this?
Right, so I budget for whatever we're allocated for in there regardless of...
Because we're still needing to hire cops, right?
So, we added a new position two years ago, I believe, a new sworn officer position. Was that last year's budget? Yes. That position was added, but, yeah, with the turnover and such, I do budget for all positions.
Anything else? Then we will open the public hearing on the budget. If anyone in the audience has any questions, comments, now is the time. Then we'll close the public hearing. I just have one other comment for myself, and that is that I know that we work really hard to run as lean as we can so that we end up with money at the end of the year, and then we spend it. One place I would like to see us spend a little bit of time and money this year is on, I don't know how you, the painting on the streets. I mean, there are intersections in this town that if the stop sign fell over, you wouldn't know you were supposed to stop there because there's nothing in the street, it's wiped out. And there are places where, Mill Joe Avenue, perfect example, there's two sections of Mill Joe that we had to redo for various reasons, really bright yellow line down the street, rest of the street, there's nothing. And to me, part of us being who we are and the town we are is that some things like that need to be raised up a little bit on the level of importance and given some attention.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and I think some of the internal discussions we've had between myself, Ted, and James is, in the past, we used to have our public works crews go out and actually paint the lines, and the painting just doesn't last over time. Thermo plastic is really the way to go. We don't have that ability here to do in-house, but you're exactly right. A lot of times, we try to operate very lean, and we've been doing a lot of that work ourselves. So, you'll probably be seeing some contracts coming through to hire a contractor to come in and do thermo plastic where needed throughout the city.
Okay. Anything else? Is this an action item? Okay, then we need your preference on the budget for 2019-2020.
I move that we accept the budget as proposed.
Second.
To be community development block grant and home programs, Mr. Ziderbarg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Just a really quick background on this, at the February meeting, every year we go through CDPG funding and what we anticipate spending the funds on for the next coming fiscal year. So we're talking about 1819 and 1920 funds. As you recall, since that time, the city staff, we actually, oh, sorry, we allocated that money this last year, 1920 funds, towards the senior center retrofit project. But since that time, the Pine Street and Mcfee Court Handicap Ramp Project, which was over by Ripon High School, and the Senior Center Parking Lot Rehab Project was finished up, and that came in a little over the city's CDPG balance that we had in account. It came in by about $47,000 on that, over and above what we had available with the funding. We were informed by San Joaquin County staff that we could reallocate some of the 1819 funds. So 1819, we also allocated funds towards the senior center retrofit project. Otherwise, we'd have to take the money, the overage money, out of our street and roads fund to offset that. So, at this time right now, we have a contractor, or we have an architect under contract who's redesigning the senior center retrofit project for the senior center over there, updating the facade and such, coming up with that design. So we're not sure exactly what we're going to be needing for that project at this time, but we will have an accurate bid on that project once we get plans and an approved design for that. So, at this point, after the reallocation, there should be about $106,000 in remaining CDPG funds left for the retrofit project at the senior center, so we're not sure if that's going to cover it or not. If the project bids come in above that amount, we can always allocate 2021 funds, which will be this next February, towards any of that overage for the senior center project. So we're just trying to kind of go a little bit back here and recapture some of the funds, so we're not going in the hole in the street and roads fund for the handicap ramp project. On the back of the staff report, there is the current allocation for 1819 and 1920 funds, and then the proposed allocations if we were to actually transfer some of those funds to cover the overage on that for the 1819 and 1920 CDPG funds. So again, if we do take the $47,000 and allocate those towards the handicap ramp, it'll leave us a balance of about $106,000 for the senior center retrofit project in that balance fund there. So that's the proposal this evening for you. It is a public hearing as well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Ziderbarg? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Zeiderbart? None. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone have any questions or comments about the proposal? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing, bring it forward for action.
Make a motion, make a second.
Next item under ordinances, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 886. This is the sidewalk repair, maintenance or replacement chapter of the Ripon Municipal Code. Who's doing this one?
That'll be me and Mr. Mayor. So there really hasn't been any changes from the first reading and introduction on this. I did want to just give council a brief update on where we were. We did have a discussion at the last meeting on this ordinance about the city hiring on a contractor who will be able to perform these removal and repair, the work, I guess, as needed for the city. That contractor would also be available for use by private parties who are responsible for repairing the sidewalk. So we are currently in that process. We're obtaining proposals and we plan on bringing something back to the council for that removal and replacement. We also have another proposal that we would be bringing back through a maintenance contract for one other, I guess, fix or remediation that would be allowed under this ordinance. So I'll just kind of direct you to 12.16.12, which is the work specifications under this ordinance. So there's, I guess, two types of repairs that the city can perform. One would be a complete removal and replacement of sidewalk as a hazard comes up. The second is what we call horizontal saw cutting. This is something that we've used in the past with some success. The way the ordinance is written out, there's certain criteria where that would be allowed. The majority of the time, this wouldn't be allowed, but the conditions where this would be allowed is where one-third or less of the sidewalk thickness could be removed to eliminate that hazard. You don't want to get much less than that because you're kind of compromising the integrity of the sidewalk. The second is making sure that once that work is complete, it does fall within ADA standards. You have different angles when you do this horizontal saw cutting. You want to make sure that it's still in compliance with ADA. And then the other thing, which is kind of the most important thing, is that there's no obstruction beneath there that's causing this directly, that you can see, observe. And the city engineering department would go out, they'd probe under there, make sure that the soil beneath the sidewalk is stable. And most of the time, it's a tree root, it's bushes, things of that nature that are causing this, so it's pretty obvious. So you do nine times out of 10 want to remove the sidewalk, fix the problem that's under there and then replace the sidewalk. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, let them know kind of where we were at. We do plan on bringing those proposals back to the council in July. So with that, I'll kind of turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and answer any questions that you guys may have.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. So James, when you do this, is it just a normal RFP that you give back? That they say, yes, we'll respond within 48 hours at $100 an hour? But when a specific project comes up, they give you an actual cost at that time? Not that it matters at our level, but just curious.
Yeah, so you'll see this on the proposals. Basically, they're going to have set prices. Some of them are going to have like a minimum criteria or a minimum amount that they would come out for, for each location. So if you give them four, they're going to have a set amount that they're going to charge for each location. On top of that, you'll have the square footage for the repair, for the different types of repair.
And they agree to respond within 48 hours, 28 hours, whatever the...
Yeah, whatever we specify in there and agree to.
Pretty cool.
But the ordinance says it could be up to 90 days, as I remember.
Correct.
In other words, they can ask for an extension of up to 90 days so that this person has some time
to get all this stuff together. Right, okay, yes.
Any other questions? My only comment is I understand the horizontal saw cutting. As a matter of personal preference, I don't like it because it sticks out like a sore thumb when you go down the sidewalk. The finisher works really hard to put a nice finish on the concrete and then you come along and cut one-third of it off and you see every rock, every bubble, everything that was under there. And you know that somebody did that. And so I just hope we really work hard to keep that at a minimum.
It's decorative.
Yeah, right. That is not a word that I think of when I go down there and see it. But it goes back to what I said about the striping and stuff, too. We are, you know, a town that we expect people to take pride in who we are and what we have. And it may cost a little extra money and it may take a little more time, but I think it's important that we keep that in front of everybody and not let things go downhill just because we're afraid it's going to cost us a little more money or time. That's all.
Is that decision on staff or is it on the property owner?
No, that'd be at the direction of the city engineer or his department, correct. And nine times out of 10, you know...
I agree. And it don't look good and it really is not that safe. It's safer, but not completely safe.
Okay, so this one, we, what? Where does it go? We waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance? Okay, I need a motion then.
I move that we accept the second.
3B, this is the ordinance 887. The dimensions, regulations and restrictions on recreational vehicle parking in residential areas. Mr. Zeiderbart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. As you recall, last month, we did do the first reading and introduction of this ordinance. In the staff report, we did list kind of the changes that are being made to the ordinances that were in front of you. We went through it at the April 9th workshop. There is a few minor amendments that were proposed. As you recall, the recreational vehicle covers actually kind of loosens up the standards that we have in place from our current ordinance. We will, we are proposing to allow these recreational vehicle covers within the rear yard space of a residence. The RV parking ordinance allows RVs to park back there anyways, but we just didn't, weren't able to have a cover back over those. So that was some direction we received from the council after the workshop there. There was really no changes made to the parking, for the RV parking ordinance at all. However, we just did some necessary cleanup in that chapter. They used to be required to get a permit from the police department for the older homes that were going to have one parked in the driveway, but that hasn't been enforced or even for, I think, the time I've been here or even chief's been here. So that was removed out of there as well. And then finally, the council, it's not in the ordinance at all, but the council did give staff direction to be a little more proactive with enforcement on the RV parking ordinance. As you do see, some of these start creeping into driveways and such where they're not supposed to be parked. And it was always on a complaint basis, but I think we're going to be a little bit more proactive with that throughout the year to kind of make sure we keep that at a minimum. So that was the changes that were in the ordinance. Nothing changed between the first reading and second reading. I do believe we have someone here that would like to make a comment, though, on this item.
Is there someone in the, if you want to go up to the podium, state your name and address?
Good evening. My name's Lex Correll. I live at 1712 Coral Stone Lane in Ripon. That's in the Cornerstone Development. I'm here tonight to express my concern and objection to what you have up here is just strictly the part about the recreational vehicles, but also in this particular thing was the storage units and what have you, which I don't have the time to go into. But it all ties together with the visual aspects of what you see when you go into the town, what you see when you go into the neighborhoods. I'm concerned about, as Mayor Zubor today is talking about, the presentation of the city, the reputation of the city. I'd hate to see it get blight because you've got people that are now getting to have more recreational vehicles in different areas in the confines of their homes. I know the parking's not changing, but I think some of these regulations that you're opening up are just a can of worms because people override what is going to be allowed to a great extent on an ongoing basis. And I think that what's going to happen here is that you will have people that'll put more and bigger units. You don't have too many restrictions on here, the size, meaning the length of the vehicles and what have you. I come from an area where I had to do a lot of battles with CCRs, controlling people. And I can see that what's going to happen here is you're looking for a lot of problems in allowing people to have more space, more height, nondescript length in what they can do. As you drive through neighborhoods, you're going to start seeing multiple more vehicles, whether they're sailboats. I don't know if the sailboats are included in this recreation vehicle. We had problems with sailboats, masts. We had problems with fishing trawler-type boats. They were small, but had all of their outriggers up in the air. So you can have a lot of things that really start looking very bad as you drive through development. And I'd hate to see the city of Ripon start having those problems, but the seeds are there for what you guys are doing. I would respectfully request that you pass on the second reading tonight, take another look at it. I'd be more than happy to come down, now that I'm retired, come down and give you my full perspective on this, but I wish you would reconsider it. I don't know. We, as the Cornerstone Development, have CCRs. There are many, many CCR developments in the city. We have a conflict, but the conflicts are in the favor legally for the CCRs that are in the development because we have the filed documents with county. Ours in particular was filed in 2006, so it's got 40 years on it. So it's still viable, but very hard to enforce. If the city allows people to do more and more, that has the objective to allow them to do more, it could cause some problems, putting bonnets on top of RVs out there. What are they going to look like? You know, are we going to have all of this stuff sticking up way over the fence line? Everybody can see it. I just don't think that's the way the city should go. We can stop it, can try to stop it with our CCRs, but they're very difficult to enforce. The CCRs aren't enforced by legal access, money access to force the people to comply. You have a very hairy situation develops because people are sticking things up that they won't tear down. You can't make them tear it down. And so even though we may not be directly affected by the CCNRs being, excuse me, in the city's regulations being changed, it does affect us because what it does, it establishes new parameters for the people that are out, particularly the ones that are in the 1988 and over range. Those lots are more what you're going to see going forward, being affected by this. The others, under 1988, are all grandfathers, as far as I'm concerned. But you've got this problem that people see this new thing going into effect. They see more trucks and vehicles and high stuff in the backyards. The compression adds up. I can tell you, we've seen it for a long time. We've had to fight it. And so directly, it doesn't affect us because we have the CCRs in place and legally could make a change. But these people get sharp on it real fast if they don't have any pressure really on them because nobody's going to beat them down and take them to court and sue them or attach something to their mortgage. But I think that what happens is as people see that these things are going on, they'll go ahead and do it in our CCR communities and then we have to bear the brunt of trying to find it. So if you make the parameters as open as you're trying to do with this, like I say, it's going to be a problem. So I just implore on you to take the time and I'd be more than happy to come down, as I say, and express more of the details of this. But I think if you read it, you're opening this up a lot more than what it looks like, just nuanced, small changes. Adding more vehicles, letting them, put them in the backyards, side yards, letting them go up, put the caps on top of them. It's just going to be a very difficult thing. Anybody have any questions? I appreciate your time.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will, just as a matter of record, like to leave our, a copy of our ordinances because I think that the city should look at the ordinances of the other parts of town that have CCRs in place so that they know that they toe in, basically toe in. And that the people that are coming in to get permits are cautioned about if CCNRs are in effect in a particular development, that they should contact their CCRs or go and read the CCRs so that if you issue a permit that's different than what we allow, we're just all looking for trouble somewhere down the line. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. I know where I live, I, we have CCNRs. How many different CCRs do we have in the city? Do you have any clue?
There's a bunch. There's CCRs that are just regulation-based and there are ones that establish homeowner associations. They come in all different shapes and sizes and varieties.
Got the stare there. Got the stare from Lisa. But they, you know, they come in all different shapes and sizes and intensity. And so, you know, they're privately enforceable and the city doesn't step in and enforce CCNRs on behalf of associations. And so the speaker is correct that the city ordinances may allow something that the CCRs don't allow and then it's to the residents of that community to take that up privately, so.
But all CCRs are different, so if you went out and got all the CCRs and put them together, it'd be a jumbo bumble.
Oh, man. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, the only comment I will make is that I, you know, I may be talking against what other council members may feel, but I don't mind postponing this and taking a look and see if we can't look at it. We may not change our minds, but, you know, we didn't have any input from anybody on this other than ourselves and a bunch of people up here kicking around and I didn't like it entirely to be in with. I don't mind listening to if there's some better ideas and if there's not, we approve it, but I don't mind. I mean, does it have to go into place right away? I just assume if you got the time to take a look at it and see if we could get some better ideas.
There is an ordinance in place now, right? This is only modified. Well, I don't have a problem either, but at this point, Mr. Correll needs to meet with Mr. Zeiderbart. Well, and you need to give him the information. He can get back to you with what he's going to present to us and then at the next meeting, we'll see what he has. But to have a big discussion about that level of detail at a city council meeting doesn't make any sense to me.
No, I agree.
All right.
That sounds good to me.
Can I just make that decision to hold?
You need a motion?
All right, I need a motion.
I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion to disagree back at the July meeting after staff has had a chance to confer with Mr. Correll.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
I knew that.
Word for word.
All right. Next item is for a SSJID retail electric project endorsement. Mr. Werner?
Back in 2009, the Ripon City Council voted to support SSJID's retail electric project. Since that time, they've had some legal challenges moving that project forward. They have approached the city and have asked, actually Ripon Mantiq has asked along to consider endorsing the project once again, showing their continued support of them taking over the retail electric here in Ripon for the PG&E facilities.
And you sent us a, was that draft letter in the packet?
It's in here, yeah.
I believe so, yes.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Werner?
Does this just go back to what they tried doing 10, 15 years ago and PG&E said, we're not selling our assets because they're worth X, but no, they depreciated values X and Y and...
Some of the information, or all the information in here did come from SSJID, but my understanding, and Peter apologized, he couldn't be here tonight, but my understanding is there's some nuances now with the bankruptcy that PG&E is going through. And so they felt like this letter of support could help them continue their efforts.
I think these are the kind of things we need to do with our partners, so if you're looking for a motion.
He said Mantiq, I know, he said Ripon and Esco. Is it Mantiq also involved in this? Well, I mean, my personal feeling is I believe I voted for this question, so I don't know why you wouldn't support it.
So do we need a motion?
I'd make a motion that we send this letter in support of SSJID.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Chief, you're on.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members of the public, I just have a couple of quick things. First of all, I just wanted to thank, or take an opportunity to thank Tracy Police Department, Lodi Police Department, Mantica Police Department, and Letherton Police Services for their assistance in the saturation traffic enforcement program that took effect last Thursday, June sixth. We did post out on our social media pages that during that eight-hour operation, approximately one hundred and twenty-one citations were issued by the eight traffic officers that worked that, and we just wanted to thank them for their participation. We have participated in other operations in those jurisdictions, so, but we only had one officer that participated and plus our dispatch center. So I just wanted to take your time to report on that and to thank those agencies. And also, this Thursday, June thirteenth, our agency, along with members of City Hall and a couple of members of the public, will be participating in the Northern California Special Olympics Torturing. This will be our fourth year participating. We'll be meeting at the downtown Ripon Historical Arch on Stockton in front of the American Legion at seven AM, and we'll be running the approximately nineteen miles to Dual Vocational Institute in Tracy. Typically, we end up around eleven, eleven-thirty, and then we'll be back in town. It's important to note that all the participants volunteer their time to participate in that event. And I think we're close to raising about a thousand dollars out of our event, so to thank everybody that's gonna participate.
What time are you gonna, are you starting down at the fire department, fire station again?
Yes, seven AM Thursday.
So, two questions. Number one, so you're going to Dual Vocational Center, so just you're gonna arrest people and just kind of take them there? How do you raise money for this?
We have a team site that's posted on our social media accounts, you can go in there and you can make a donation.
But I mean, is it like for so many miles that you run or something, is that...
No, it's just a flat rate. You can donate to the team in general or individual participants.
So what's the website?
I know you...
You can get it back to it, you can get it to us later, you can get it to us later.
Okay.
I have one question. I was wondering if we could get some sort of, not a lot of detail, but some sort of a follow-up report on that enforcement day? I mean, a hundred and twenty-one tickets in eight hours, that's fifteen an hour. And there are a lot of people in town who...
Got busted.
They don't, no, but they don't, they hear that and they say, "See, we do have a problem." I, I'm just thinking if we knew, all right, I'd like to know how many of them were residents versus out of town.
That would be...
We do have that information.
That would be interesting.
Okay, I figured you might. And the other one is what general classes of offenses they were, like moving violations or running a stop sign, you know, just where they fell.
I have the general information on that, I don't have the exact numbers, but majority of the citations were for both speeding and seat belts. There were a couple of other violations mixed in, stop signs, there were some even window tint, other types of hazardous moving violations or safety violations, but a significant portion of them were speeding and seat belts. And then the other part of that question, roughly one quarter, twenty-five percent were Ripon residents, seventy-five percent were out-of-towners.
Really?
Interesting.
Wow.
Roughly thirty of those citations were issued to Ripon community members. They have Ripon addresses on their driver's license.
Well, I would just say, if nothing else, it's good, good that we're keeping the city safe there for one day and hammering down on people, but if nothing else, it created a lot of awareness. I know people were just being aware of their surroundings and, you know, as you start seeing a motorcycle cop on every corner, they get off their cell phones, they buckle their seat belts, they do the things, and hopefully it makes them pay attention going forward. So just to draw awareness, if nothing else, for, you know, what we got that day is great, but it made people just, I think, use their head a little bit more while they're driving, so.
And if I, if I could just tag on one item to that, this was a pre-planned operation. It wasn't because of any other things that are going on in our community. Each, each agency over the course of a period of time has had one of these each month, and it was just our turn. We've been trying to get it, but we didn't fall in line until this month. So there was no other reason to do it other than to bring up awareness and get people to slow down, pay attention to what they're doing when they're behind the wheel, and hopefully reduce accidents and keep our streets and roads safe for both motorists and pedestrians.
And is it gonna continue, or do we know?
There'll probably be a plan. I don't have any particulars on any future operation, but it's worked well for each jurisdiction, so I'm sure there'll be something coming down. I just don't know when, where, and it'll take place.
So we may have it every month, every two months, so people in, that are coming through Ripon ought to be aware. Because it's gonna happen, they just don't know when.
I would, I would throw that out as a broader term, anywhere in the county, because this could pop up in any jurisdiction at any point in time.
Just worried about Ripon.
Well, yes, especially Ripon, but if we curb the habits of people driving in our county, if we can change those bad driving habits or unsafe driving habits, that'll have a positive impact on us also.
Such a chief.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, wanted to report on our water uses, use for May. We were, had a decrease of thirty-four point two-two percent in two thousand thirteen, so we're still doing, doing well. I have a feeling this month for a change. Brings our running average to twenty-four point eight percent.
Are we still getting, issuing warnings and citations?
Yes, we're still, as complaints come in, as we see them, our water conservation coordinator is putting warning notices, warning notices. We're getting pretty good results with just the notices. We're also focusing on water leaks that the computer, our Water Watch points out to us so that we can kind of curtail those water leaks, so it's working well.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens? Mr. Zeitovar?
Yes, a couple items. At our last meeting, I did mention a few items that we were dealing with. One of them was the commercial cannabis ordinance that the county was adopting. And the second one was a project referral notice for a cell tower that we got from the county as well. Just to follow up on the commercial cannabis ordinance, we did submit a letter to the county on that item. It really got down to, they weren't super interested, I think, in changing the ordinance to where if it was in the city sphere that it would be denied. However, they did state that any project that was, is within the city sphere, they will give us an opportunity, like through a project referral notice, to make comments on that. And then in their general plan, they have some policies and such that talk about any, any property within a city sphere, they will, they will take those comments with great weight in looking at a project. So does that mean they'll deny it? Not necessarily. However, hopefully, the comments we would make, if one were to pop up in our sphere of influence, would have some, a little bit more weight on that. There's always some options for us at that point, too, is if push comes to shove, we could always kind of move forward with an annexation on that piece of property and pull it into the city limits to stop something like that. So I think a little bit of proactive, you know, offense on that if we have to. So it's just a matter of keeping an eye on it. The second item was the, was the cell tower, which is located kind of straight down Harvest Drive here where the strawberry stand is. We did submit a comment to the county on that regarding its location to residential, proposed residential in the future for us, and that it was within that area. And so they got back with a few questions on our general plan that we'd sent over to them and showing the location and such. So that's where we stand on that. I will forward to council the, the letter that was sent on the cell tower site, just so you know what was sent to them, but...
Any questions for Mr. Zeitovar? Mr. Peace?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to make the council aware, if you weren't already, PG&E has just started implementing a public safety power shut-off program that's coming into effect this fire season. They actually just had a shut-off over the weekend that affected twenty-two thousand customers over five counties. We just recently met with them to find out what, what impacts it's gonna have on our city. There's a very real possibility that the entire San Joaquin Valley can be shut down at times just depending on what they need to shut down to try and prevent the fires. So right now, staff, we are compiling a, kind of a critical infrastructure list for, for water sewer facilities. We're also looking at buildings, kind of trying to determine what we have as far as backup power currently and what we need to do to get backup power in place, our contingencies for those, those critical areas. So we'll keep the council updated as we move forward and we hear a little bit more from PG&E. We are waiting to get some maps from them that kind of show us a little bit about how their infrastructure is tied in. And then we also will be meeting with MID to, to determine if there's any impacts. PG&E did say there are some impacts to some of these smaller utility providers in the area as well, so.
James, I've got a question. So PG&E, I read something today, PG&E said they will notify cities, counties, whatever, before they do it. How are they gonna notify everybody? Gonna go, Paul Rivera knocking everybody's door and telling them their power's going out?
Yeah, so they, they've given us kind of a number of different ways. They have NICS, or they have a, they have the website that they'll be sharing with us. They'll also be letting the cities and counties know, and then we could distribute out on all of our, or our other, our websites and other areas. So I, I guess we don't have all the details on how they are, but they are gonna be...
But that seems more reasonable. The fact they put on their websites saying that you can have to check your website every five minutes to see what's going on. If you put it on NICS, when people, I guess, subscribe to that.
If your lights flicker and your house off, you don't come back home, you're shit.
And a lot of these...
The flicker's the hint.
I guess a lot of these events, they're fairly predictable is what they're telling us. They kind of get the, the weather information, and so they generally know forty-eight hours before they're gonna have to shut these off. So hopefully, you're gonna get a forty-eight hour notice, you may not, though, maybe twenty-four, maybe less, just depending on what hits. But generally speaking, they, they said they should be able to give a forty-eight hour notice, so.
You know, I've heard rumors if you're talking about sometime five days straight?
Up to, correct.
How could they even do that with people that have medical stuff going on, that they're, you know, that they need their, you know, needs of power?
They have no life.
Plus you gotta be particular on food. I just don't understand how they can shut you down that long. I could see them shutting down for hours or a day, but five days?
Well, yeah, and right now, as far as what we heard from PG&E is that they're, they're kind of public outreach folks are right now just scrambling. They're going around to all these cities, they're going around to hospitals, you know, areas that really are gonna depend on power, depend on power to that extent. So, yeah, it's, it's a challenge and they're, they're kind of scrambling to get it out there. I think that five days is what they told us is kind of a worst-case scenario, and, yeah.
So literally, everybody in town should go off and buy a generator, basically. I mean, if there's that...
You want to start a generator company?
Well, I can say from personal experience, I don't think they understood when they started this, the extent of the shutdowns that they were gonna have to do. I have a place up in Arnold. I have, I know everything about what's going on because they send it all to me on the phone, on my computer, but it's because I have a place up there. Everything is relative to Arnold. But if something is gonna happen there, I get, I've already gotten a couple because they've run tests. I get a text and I get an email right off the bat that says, "This is what's gonna happen." I don't think they under, they realized when they started this that when they have a switching station in Tracy, everything east of Tracy is gonna get messed over when they're trying to stop something that's happening in Calaveras County. And so they've got a problem, and I don't envy them at all, but it's, it's not gonna be nice. That thing this weekend was a flipping disaster for those people up there in Napa. I hope everybody learned something.
You know, to me, it almost seems like a threat because everybody's trying to sue them for the past fires, you know what I mean?
What would you do?
Yeah.
They don't wanna start another fire?
Right. But I think it's important that we get as much information out as we can because I, I'm worried about city infrastructure. We've got a place right over here with a couple hundred people that are, most of them are very dependent on electricity for staying alive. And I'm hoping that people, you know, that somehow will work with them, and PG&E will, keep that from happening.
Does Bethany Home have backup generation? I suppose they do. They almost have to.
Yeah, because the fire department had to break into their, when the power went out here a few months ago, or six months ago, whatever it was, they, they couldn't get into where their machinery was to get it started, so they go down and break the door. So they do have backup.
When we met with PG&E, Chief Bitters was there, and we did ask them to contact Bethany Home, made them aware of the sensitivity with that. The interesting thing I thought, though, was PG&E said they're hoping to be able to start fortifying their lines up in the areas there since of the wildfires, putting metal structures up and extra reinforcement around the wires so that they could withstand, you wouldn't have some of the wildfire risk that they currently have.
Hoping.
And they're adding clamors and other information.
Uh-oh, there it's coming.
Anything else? You sure? Mr. Turfstra?
All this talk about fires and power outages, I'm nervous. I think I'm gonna go to Washington for a... I'll see you guys in August.
What?
And he's not kidding.
You're gonna phone in?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The Northwest, Pacific Northwest office of Turfstra Henderson is open next week.
One week of a hundred degrees.
I know, one week of a hundred degree weather, I'm out of here.
Mr. Werner? Mr. Uker? Mr. DeGraff?
Of course I have something. Yeah, I don't, nothing, nothing really more, more important, but I think tonight highlights why I say thank you to the members of the public for being here every time. We appreciate you here commenting on, on things, and if nothing else, just paying attention because without the public's input, we're just five guys up here talking about what we wanna do. So, you know, we certainly appreciate you guys being here, and I probably have other things, again, like I'd like, usually like to say about the current state of politics, but I will avoid that for sake of time. Thank you.
Mr. Restuccia?
I thought you were gonna say that. You want me to say it now? Yeah, I do have something to say. So, you know, we went to the Memorial Day event at the cemetery, and it's, you know, obviously a very sad day for all of us there. Somehow the schedule got screwed up where Mayor Zuber was not added and was told about five minutes before he had to speak, "You're gonna speak." And he did, and I gotta compliment you, man, because he got choked up, he got me choked up, he got everybody choked up. And that was like a last-minute, you know, most of us gotta put our speeches together, so I wanna compliment you, you did a, you did a very nice job.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Nothing to report.
I have one thing, because all the others were taken care of. I have been in touch with the members of the Community Youth Commission. We had, I think there are five on it, two have resigned from it, and it is not a real active commission, but they're subject to all kinds of requirements because they're a commission formed by the council. So I've talked to Kevin and I've let the remaining commissioners know, and so far I've had no negative comments. So in the not-too-distant future, that item is gonna come before the council, and what we're gonna do is convert it to the same type of commission that we did the, what was it? Senior. So that they can still operate, but they will not be subject to all the requirements of being a, an appointed commission. And I'm gonna have a conversation with John Mangalos, and I'm seriously looking at doing the same thing for the Historical Society. There's no reason that those groups need to be subjected to all this stuff for the level of work that they do for the community. So I'm gonna try to get that taken care of.
It's a very positive for the city.
Right, yeah.
I was on that committee for years, and it was kind of like...
A senior committee?
Yeah, they, I mean, there's a lot of stuff they have to do that is total waste of time, and so, all right. Hearing nothing else, and we don't have anything else to do, right? Meeting's adjourned. So now what are you gonna do with the rest of your evening? So now what are you gonna do with the rest of your evening?
I'm gonna go home and take.